I'd like to call our May 16 meeting to order please here in the library. This is a good one. You might be able to listen to the pledge.
No, it's over there.
I think Josh wants us to pledge to him again.
No, Josh just wants us to follow around and go to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Will you call the roll please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hogue?
Here.
Mayor Houghton McMillan?
Here.
Councilmember Randles?
Present.
Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
The next item is the public participation. And I have a card for John Benton.
I'm still here. Got three minutes, right? You give me 20 seconds from last month, please. I'm here because this attorney here, his attorney sat in a code board meeting and laughed at me when she took my money for living in a warehouse. You guys don't want to get my money back. And I tried to go in front of the code board so I can explain what Kevin Mann, the deacon that testified, was sitting next to me, and he's not even on the website as a witness. He's a witness. He testified it. You go to that website and you don't even see him. You took the CD off where his lawyer is laughing at me, man, along with the board members. They think I'm homeless instead of stepping up there saying, hey, is there something we can do to help you? No, they laughed at me, took my money. Now I can tell you what I was doing in that warehouse. I couldn't tell you. Six months before your lawyer laughed at me, I sent an email from the mail from my shop there to the news, Channel 6 up in Virginia. And the reporter put her pants on, went out and chased people. They were slamming the door in her face. Hanging up on her. And I sat up there before that, and I was in jail. The three judges wouldn't give me a bond. My lawyer wouldn't give me a bond. And I told that judge, and I was swinging my finger at that third judge, when I get out of this jail, I'm going to get back to Florida. You hear me? And I'm going to give a name to Judge Tanya Rainwater in Brevard County. She's going to start signing papers. And I'll get out of here. You hear me? They didn't believe me. They could hear me out in the hallway. I was answering the judge, yeah. When she asked me a question, this is in the transcript right here. That was a Friday. Monday morning, Judge Rainwater was down there signing papers just like I told them. Who do you think called them? I didn't go back to my jail and call her. A judge did. Now, he tells me that Kevin Mann's son has been molested. He got arrested. Am I correct? You told me Kevin Mann's son was-- I told you that last year. Let me tell you, when I spit the name out, you better look at it. I put preachers in jail. I go after nuns. They answer for what they do. I've been scoping it out for nine months. I was in Arizona. I had people here working on it. And I got another name for you. Richard McMillan. So you want to mess with me, go look at him. That judge, maybe she'll look at that man tomorrow. You can have your three minutes, and I'll be back. You've got about $300. Your lawyer laughed at me on this CD. Referred to me as a cookie that crumbled while they were voting, man. And here I was up there putting child molesters in jail, and to this day I will never find out what happened to my daughter up there. It looks like the second judge that I was in front of. She met my daughter when she was four months old. I never met that judge, so you're in trouble. You took my $300. Why don't you stick up for your own team, man? I'm in your sandbox, laughing at you like your attorney did to me.
Okay, Josh, thank you. I have another card from Abby Johnson. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. My name is Abby Johnson. I'm with the St. Johns River Water Management District. I'm just here to introduce myself tonight to the full council. I'm the new intergovernmental coordinator for Brevard County. And so I've got about 40 some cities between Brevard, Belushi, and Indian River, and I apologize for not coming here sooner. Should you want a presentation on truly technical information, we can arrange that. But really, my bigger message is that we're here to partner, and if there are ways that we can take water conservation and natural systems projects into consideration moving forward, we're happy to do so. Thank you very much. And I have cards.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you. I'm sure you'll be here in a lot of us. Is it Johnson? J-H? J-O-H-J? Esselman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next thing we have is proclamation for Tracy Bagwell. Wait, all right. Nick plus.
Guduski.
Guduski. Rosemary Bagwell. Rosemary, who is she?
Well, they couldn't make it. Katie Crabtree is also here.
Yeah.
Okay. That Brad Bagwell.
Yeah, they weren't able to make it.
She couldn't make it.
Hello, Susan. Can I make it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're here tonight to-- we did this last year, if I remember. Tracy Bagwell. Kind of knew a little bit. Whereas Tracy has had a passion for helping youth in foster care, in a brief belief in the potential of all children and young adults. Whereas Tracy believed in protecting the children of this community. Whereas Tracy dedicated her life to the children and young adults of Brevard County. And Tracy Lynn Bagwell faithfully served the state of Florida as a caseworker for the Department of Children and Families. Tracy's life tragically ended while protecting the children of our great community, the good of our community. Tracy's legacy has resulted in 15 years of charitable support and $400,000 to help young people find safety, self-worth, and self-suspiciousy. And I'd like to welcome Molly and present you with this. This was signed on the first of May by myself.
Thank you.
If you would like to say something.
Thank you.
I gave each of you a invitation, and we hope some of you will make it to the event this year.
We thank you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an interview by Ned Stone.
Please.
One of the podium plates. Good evening. We've been-- Have the attorney--
Good evening. How are you?
Talk to you a minute.
Just a couple of questions. One's just a matter of malady. Just wanted to verify that all the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge.
It is.
And you know you're being considered for the code enforcement board?
Say that again.
You know you're being considered for the code enforcement board, correct?
Yes.
And do you feel comfortable adjudicating code enforcement matters and imposing fines on individuals that will end up having to pay those fines?
I do.
Mayor?
Okay. Doors open to the council. Welcome in.
Mrs. Stone, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Okay. You are well aware there are some blighted properties in the city of Kinnabarville?
Yes.
What is your feeling on the state, the way things are right now? Or do you feel that we need to change these codes to make the city a little better or clean it up a little bit? I'd just like to get your feeling on what you think we need to do and how you plan on enforcing it.
I'm not familiar enough with the codes to request any changes. When I came here last time, a month ago, I spoke before the Code Enforcement Committee. And I explained that in my prior work life, I worked for the federal government as a compliance officer part of the time and IG offices part of the time. And I thought that I would be able to serve the community by being a volunteer for the Code Enforcement Committee. But as yet, I haven't gotten a book of all the codes to study what they are, to make any kind of recommendation, to change anything.
I would thank you, Mrs. Stone, for being here. I feel kind of guilty because I think I started this here with you.
You did.
But in any event, we're always looking for new people. I guess I would comment, we've all got the same thing as you filled out.
Uh-huh.
Your prior experience is excellent because you was with three different divisions of Department-- DOI, the Department of Interior.
Mm-hmm.
And your expertise is analyzing documents, and certainly with the code enforcement, you're going to have to look at that and say, well, is that right? Does this fit the case, things like that?
Right.
Reading on down here, you got a master's degree in general administration from University of Maryland while you were up there.
That's correct. That's correct.
And high-level security. We just thank you for locating to our community and for getting involved.
Thank you.
Think you'll be a real asset. And a lot of it will be challenging. My question would be, are you aware that sometimes you have to find a neighbor in violation of code enforcement for something that's wrong? I think you could do that.
I was asked that last month. It's-- I think sometimes it might be more difficult than others, but the law is the law, and you have to apply it but be compassionate at the same time.
Thank you for following through with this. You want? Eddie?
I have no questions, and I thank you for your interest in our city. Our code enforcement board is very important to us. And they do make some very tough decisions for the city, so I appreciate your interest, and I'm sure they hope to run a terrific job on that board. Thank you.
No, thank you for your interest. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Everything I've read seems perfectly okay. Welcome to the club as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
I call the same to everybody. I think your credentials are quite worthy of being appreciated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
Don't leave?
Don't leave your chair.
I grab for a little while. Do some more. Okay. Consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda, publicly? How's it? Nobody cares to pull anything, we'll go for motion.
Mayor Adger Delinker here. I would move for approval of items number one, two, and four, and desire a little clarification on item three. So my suggestion would be to approve items one, two, and four in the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a vote. We need a second.
Second.
Question by Mr. Randles, and the second by Mayor Proton McMillan. For one, two, and four?
Councilmember Brown?
Okay, we're going for the motion of--
One, two, and four.
And then you'll talk about--
Discuss three and then go for the motion.
According to what I'm looking at, we apparently, Councilmember Randles wants to talk about item three and item five, the retreat minutes. Is that correct?
No, item five is a separate item.
Is it?
It's just item four.
Well, I guess I was just too quick with the gun. I apologize.
Item three is what he's pulling.
I keep it at the ready, of course.
All right. We have a motion to pass one, two, and four as on the consent agenda.
I'll continue to call rolls.
Call roll.
Mayor Hogue?
Four.
Mayor Proton McMillan?
Four.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh?
Four.
And Mayor, my question in item three is simply clarification. I support it because I know what it is. One word gives me some concerns. If I may read the agenda, it says, "City Council approved Cannavale City Park Master Plan as completed." That word, "approved," does that mean we're approving for doing it or approving the plan from Kimberly Corn?
What the intent is, that this just deals with the bicycle mobility plan. This does not intend to try to bind the council in any way to approval of the Cannavale Park. That ultimately will be another issue that we'll talk about primarily in the context of the retreat minutes, or the retreat decisions made by the council. And what we did is we did these concurrently from a cost-savings point of view, and it was all funded by DEO. And we certainly, as a staff, recognized the outstanding work that were done by Alice and Mark Filto additionally with the mobility plan and their role in it. We expanded that a little bit on, well, the citizens of Florida money is primarily rather than just Cape Canaveral. And so it's been a very overall beneficial process for the community. And certainly since I've been here, we spend a lot of money implementing these plans. We do not put them on the shelf and ignore them, like is so often the case.
Thank you. With the city manager's explanation of what approve is, my concern was that I just sometimes approve, if we're not clear, really means full steam ahead. But he made it very clear that this is just approving what Kimberly Horn did. And they did do a tremendous job on that. And two, three points forward, I'm discussing, staff did a great job here on meeting with the residents at different times, asking what they want, what they didn't want, what was the best for them. Quite a thing going on since February on this.
I'm sorry, Ms. Councilmember Randles, I'm having one of those days apparently. This Cape Canaveral City Park Master Plan in concept for approval, yes. We recognize that means the depiction of the park. That doesn't mean funding or anything like that. I apologize. I'm out to lunch apparently for some reason.
Some days you're home.
But, yeah, so I was dead, absolutely, positively, totally wrong. And what happened, I guess, is my brain recognizes we did these concurrently through the various, the process, and then I forgot the fact that we separated them for this. So I apologize. I'm goofing up. My bad.
You clarified it enough that I feel I can support it. So Mayor, if I may make the motion for approval of item number three on the consent agenda, as explained by the city manager.
I think this is the plan that they brought to us, if it's completely undergirded, doing it. We're just--
Well, sometimes.
Entering the plan. The plan will-- We have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Let's do the second. What's the second? Talk about it?
Well, I just want to talk about it, make sure we're all in one accord. Basically, we're approving the master plan for Cannavale City Park.
Yes, that is correct. The master plan itself, you're not saying you're doing a project or anything like that. You're just saying that you've looked at the master plan. It seems to make sense for the use of the property. If the city council decides to move it forward as a project, it would be contained in the budget, in the CIP, along with many other CIP projects. And certainly, the project of this nature gets dealt with, in particular, in the next agenda item that talks about the retreat. The council's decisions after retreat and confirms those. And then as part of that recommendation, I am asking the council to allow staff to move forward. And I'll elaborate much more on that if I can perhaps have my stuff together by then. I don't know what I'm doing. Maybe I shouldn't say that. There'll be those out there that say, yeah, we thought that all along.
I think we're all aboard with what we're going to do here.
My bad. Oh, man.
Okay, um, did we get a second?
I second.
Now, anybody who wants to discuss this?
I think we did.
We all on board with what we're going to do here now?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, I made the motion.
Well, you're the guy that pulled the items. I'm just asking you if you have any--
Yes, thank you for asking.
All righty. The color roll, please.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Hogue?
For.
Mayor Proton McMillan?
For the motion.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh?
Four.
Okay, items-- direction, we have a strategic planning of 2017 and 18. We're going to review and approve if we get the motion for the city council's 2017 and 18 strategic master plan. Of which we all attended. And Dr. Beal was our narrator. Mr. Green, would you--
Yes, the city council and staff, along with a consultant, hired a facilitator, Dr. Tom Freo. We met at the Radisson on March 29. Council established its goals and objectives for the ensuing five-year period. Very much, the overall discussion dealt with a number of potential projects for the city. I've been city manager for Cape Canaveral. If I make it through the day, so to speak, without hurting myself. I will have been here seven years on June 1 of this year. And from the get-go, there's been a lot of community conversation about a number of projects and initiatives to make Cape Canaveral walkable, bikeable, pedestrian-friendly in all respects. And we set about the process, certainly since I've been here, of upgrading the facilities of the city and trying to meet the, basically, the past needs, the present needs, and the future needs historically. And as part of this, that's the reason we have a new city hall, which was approved unanimously by the city council. That's why we went ahead and built a new fire station. That's why we finished up the Ridgewood Avenue streetscape. That's why we've done the North Atlantic Avenue streetscape as well. And millions and millions of dollars worth of improvements that primarily bring about the stabilization of the city's operation and preparing the city for the future. Along with a number of significant stormwater improvement, water quality projects. We've prepared a number of master plans and overlay districts, CRAs, brownfields, and all those things that a local government should do. In our particular case, there's still a backlog in a number of areas where additional improvements are ongoing. My understanding in general is that the community conversation over the fire station went on for basically three decades. And even tonight, when I guess my brain is not properly attached in all respects, that amounts to about 30 years. The city hall conversation, as an example, goes back to apparently almost as long, somewhere around the mid to late 80s time period. The North Atlantic streetscape was part of the conversation when I got here. Very much, there was a strong interest by the community, as expressed in the visioning effort, to be bikeable, walkable, pedestrian-friendly, to engage the community in events and activities. We've upgraded Banana River Park, certainly done a tremendous amount of work at Manatee and those kinds of things. And I've heard the need for a community multi-generational facility for the community. We've heard the needs many times expressed for a swimming pool or a need for having a splash pad, a skate park. And we've certainly been through the drill on Beach Access and Sherridown Park and all those things. And all of that for the future basically comes together in this past retreat and the discussion at the retreat. And the decision that was made by the city council was to continue to acquire Sherridown Park and be willing to spend approximately $3 million to improve it, to move forward with the multipurpose generational facility, meeting the needs of the community for the various programs, PAL, the youth center, those needs, as well as indoor basketball, walking track in the building, meeting space area for events and activities and weddings and receptions and those kinds of events. And so with all those things in mind, the total need, this building, or I mean, the city hall building currently, gets converted into a community facility for the arts and cultural side of the city. The cost of that is 1.2 million estimated. We've been very focused on streetscapes in Polk Avenue, which we decided at the retreat during the prior year established the idea that we would identify among the streets chosen last year by the city council to move forward with the idea of trying to create a business district, because one of the main features in the city of Cape Canavale is there is no real central business district kind of core like you see in most communities. So our attempt is to recognize, with respect to that, is to recognize the opportunity of the government center and facilities, the new city hall, the cultural center, the sheriff's department office building, the library, a property that we were in accord on as recently as today at the corner of Magnolia and, Todd, what was the other? Magnolia and--
Polk.
And Polk, yeah. And so all of those come together, then we talk, that allows us the opportunity to proceed forward with Inspiration Park, extend our influence further down into the oceanfront area, meeting again the community's needs. And Whimsy Park for sculptures and community events and activities adjacent, basically, to the library and the veterans park there. And so all of this comes together. The total equals approximately $20 million. We have certainly some uncertainty with where the city is at this point in time. We basically mostly survived the onslaught by the Florida Legislature, and frankly, to some extent, our president and folks in Washington, DC as well. And we still have, as I told you then, at the retreat on March 29, we have a window of opportunity. If you want to continue to do some progressive things in the city of Cape Canavale that will meet the bulk, if not all, of the community's needs, present and future, then the action on the retreat and what my recommendation to the city council is, is to proceed forward with the design and construction of the multipurpose facility, multi-generational facility at Cannavale City Park. Set the other stuff related to that on hold for the time being and allow us to move forward on that as well as on the old city hall building, because part of the need there is to move some of the activities into that building while the multipurpose facility or multi-generational facility is under construction, design, and ultimately ready for occupancy. And so what this all comes together is the council's goals and objectives. The council, at that meeting unanimously, told the city manager and the staff that you wanted to move forward with a potential tax increase and funding for all of those facilities over the five-year period. I, as city manager, committed to you that if you were sincere and serious about that, I would remain here five more years as city manager. I obviously clearly understand that I serve at your pleasure. But if you want us to do it and want it done, it will get done. I additionally said that I was so excited about the opportunity that I would work the remainder of the five-year period without any sort of additional salary increase, which means-- means I'm making my contribution out of the Green Family Fund to assist you in a very small way, but serious for our finances, making additional money available to operate these facilities or build them to start with. So, I think I've stepped up to the plate, and I think the staff is ready, willing, and able to do it, or I will ensure they are. I'll do my best to do it. I also said I'm going through some challenges with aging and, from a health perspective, assuming I can keep myself blue together and you want me to, we'll do all of those things. I think you need them. I think that's what we should do. And I think the intent is, clearly, not to break the community. We can do these kinds of projects in a phased way and still remain the third lowest taxing level city from an avalorum tax rate point of view in Rivar County. So, we're not blowing the bank. We're not going to bankrupt the city. What we're going to do is, if you step up to the plate, and I frankly expect you to, I want you to make the decision to allow us to go forward with the two buildings initially that will require an approximate half mil increase that keeps us within the range of still being among the lowest. We still have some uncertainty as to the CRA. All of these projects are within the CRA. They are contained conceptually in the CRA plan that you approved. And the only thing holding us up in that particular area there would be that the county commission is concerned about CRAs and how they function. And in the context of the county needs over $600 million, I think it is, for roads and the 4.4 million or whatever it is that they pay to the CRA, I guess is going to make a big difference in addressing that outstanding obligation that's been frankly kicked down the road for a number of years and decades, as is often the case in government. And so, at this point, you have approving the retreat, everything related to it. You've gotten a wealth and world of information from staff on how we could structure things and do that. Additionally, the council knows or should know, the audit report shows the city in very, very good condition. Yes, we've spent down some of the reserves, but we've converted the reserves, the dollar setting there losing money from an interest earnings point of view, or largely losing money due to inflation. We've converted those to assets, and the asset value of this community has continued to rise every year since I've been here, based upon the investment. So, I really don't understand why some elements of the community feel that we're spendthrifts and doing all the wrong things. It's about a quality of life. We're competing with all of the other cities in the world for quality residents to come here, live, work, and play, and raise a family. And we're doing much the same thing within our 1.9 square mile city to attract investment and businesses into the community. And again, I was very upfront with the city council before the interview, during the interview, and after the interview. I haven't changed one iota of anything I committed to do for you. And so, I've made my commitment. I've kept it. My expectation as a professional leader is that you keep the same commitment to me that you made, and you continue to stay the course. Hold me responsible. Hold me accountable. I don't care what you do. But I think when all the dust settles, these are the right things for this community to do. We're fixing a multitude of junky problems from the past, and it's been a rather interesting effort, to say the least. Every time we turn around, we find a problem from the past that has placed the city in the ditch in some fashion, and it takes a lot of time to undo and redo. And, well, can I guarantee you that I'm not screwing up? I assure you, I do. I did tonight at the meeting, twice at least. So, maybe that's not such a good reference on my part. But I think we stay the course. We keep the recommendation we made to you, and we will do our best to make it work. People that want to talk about the city's debt is low. Our reserves meet all of the requirements and then some. The rest of the story simply is that in 2018, I'm convinced that when the constitutional amendment shows up on the ballot, that the citizens of Florida will overwhelmingly vote to give themselves a reduction in taxes. That reduction in approximate numbers costs the city of Cape Canaveral presently a quarter of a million dollars less to work with. There's other costs. Once again, that happens every time Washington gets together and every time the folks in Tallahassee that are supposed to look out for all of the citizens, not just a select few corporations perhaps. We owe ourselves and deserve to get it right for present and future generations. And so, this is an opportunity for you to do it. We will continue to move forward with fixing the things that we find, and we'll do our darndest to not to create too many more that will need to be fixed later. But they always look a little more clear in the rearview mirror than they do looking through the windshield. So, with that, we have a recommendation to the city council. What that would necessitate ultimately is what I feel is best and doable is a 10-year financing. We would reactivate the financing in concept that we did previously, that the city council approved. It would require an ordinance. It would require two public hearings, so it would be very transparent. We would go out for bids ultimately and proposals. And I would do my best to negotiate, as we did before. The last rate we got was 1.99. I think this time, seriously, and I don't want to stake a guarantee on it, but I'm confident that we will come in less than 2.5 for a 10-year loan. And the concept, unless someone convinces me otherwise, would be a revenue stream pledge, which is totally legal under Florida law, with the shared revenues that we get from the state and other sources. It would not be an avalorum tax pledge. And once we're sure where the CRA fits into this, if the county takes no action on CRAs, then we would ultimately use CRA funds for the repayment of the loan. And so, the process would be just like we've done before. We would provide the revenue stream and the security of the general government revenues, because we'd get a better interest rate that way. And then, we would, from there, enter into a loan agreement between the general fund or the city itself and the community redevelopment agency. And the community redevelopment agency would take on all of the debt, and it would amortize that. Once all of that is in place, and it's going to take a while, then we would be in a position, the Hancock Bank Loan, I believe it pays off in '22, '23, '23. And yes, we're making payments on it. There is no balloon, like the story around the town is. Its payments are being made per the schedule. And the, again, we would have the additional revenues so that we could free up and pledge, get a very good coverage. I think currently, our Hancock loan has a five factor of coverage, or very close to that, five times more than we need to cover the debt. We could probably sneak in within that five overall, in the range of acceptable, but I don't feel comfortable in doing that way for any number of reasons with the continued uncertainty that we're facing in local government. So, we would ask that the taxes be raised. If the home is $100,000, I think a quick calculation in my head, which maybe is off today, would be about $50, $60 a year or so for a property of that type. Now, that's the homestead. Now, certainly, a whole nother story exists for the commercial properties. But again, when we put all the pieces together, we'll free up about 600, between $600 and $650,000 a year in revenue as a result of when the Hancock loan is paid off. But then, this here, what we're talking about here, out of an abundance of caution and acknowledging the fact that in 2018, we'll see the homestead passed, that will affect our revenue, as I said, by about $250,000 or so, that all the pieces can still meet the needs. CRA, the county has committed to let the cities know somewhere between now and the 1st of December on their final acquisition, meaning that they will have entered into inter-local agreements with all of the cities in the county. And if that does, again, we're really in fabulous shape for a number of things that the council may wish to accomplish. But what the retreat resulted in was everything that the city council and the city manager and staff had heard from the community about facilities and experiences, those kinds of things, is all contained within that five-year. I would suspect that if we can be successful, we'll do one more streetscape during that same period. For those that live along Central and Central to Thurm, I think definitely, from my perspective, that ought to be the next one that we do. And I would like to eke out Thurm also back to Central, basically, where they intersect and beyond, all the way to Banana River Park, if we can make that happen. So, that's kind of my perception, impression of what's achievable if you can find a way to turn us loose. And we'll do our best to deliver everything, particularly, again, if we can be successful politically. There's no doubt in my mind that the Florida Legislature will continue to press and impose its will upon local governments in the state of Florida. That's their philosophy currently. Rule from Tallahassee, and they can't even rule themselves in 60 days in new estate budget. And they didn't implement their role in the marijuana issue. So, they're going to take us all over, do it their way, and we're all going to achieve great results. Not. I don't know. I make it up as I go.
That was a summary, right?
Yeah, and that was a summary of the presentation. Hopefully, I didn't leave too many stones unturned.
All I can say is, we're moving forward. The city is being driven by the tourist industry, the cruise ships, businesses wanting to locate. The city is very vibrant. I've never seen it this vibrant. And for what we've done over the last few years, go back to 2015, the increase that we're asking for is not probably, but maybe point two and a half mils more than what we were paying six, eight years ago. And we've done what we've done. The new city hall, you know, we're paying part of that now, but what we're trying to do is, I can't believe that it can all really work. I listen, and I read it, and I understand it, but how do you accomplish what we've accomplished with very little, by being human and knowing how to keep the cards on the table?
One of the things that helped us tremendously is because we got ourselves in a position to have projects somewhat shovel-ready. And, you know, the staff deserves all the credit for that, not me. And what we essentially have done over the last few years is leveraged pretty much in about $4.5 million range of state and federal grant funds. And, you know, it's a challenge to meet all the requirements and do the paperwork and absorb all that, but we've basically managed to do that with, we have no more employees now, as I recall, than we had in 2010, as an example. And I frankly would challenge anyone to say that our service level is not as high now as it was then in our response times. I mean, we're not perfect. We screw up all the time, and I do all the time, apparently. But when all the dust settles, our hearts in the right place. We want to do a great job for this community. We value the opportunity to hold the positions that we hold, and we just want to do our best to please. And yes, sometimes it costs money.
I appreciate the mayor and Mr. Green, that I'm going to be doing the commencement speech for the KP Elementary, and it's going to be before a packed house. And I'm elated that I'll be able to tell those parents and the students that the city is moving forward with trying to get a multi-generational center, get some of those kids off the streets, and have a place for them to go, and I think that's really huge. And I appreciate all the efforts that you put for the staff to see what may not happen.
I'm looking at, you know, what we're asking our staff, and David's asking for a 3.96, which is like, we're used to 3.2, 3.4, 3.6, but 3.96, I don't think is a giant increase by any means. To accomplish what we're going to be able to do with just that small increase, I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it. I think the city, we've been following the visioning. Ten years ago, we had that. The citizens, with what we had on the item here tonight on our walkable, bikeable area, the people are asking for these things that we have programmed in our next five-year plan. It's all here. It's, there's papers here from people I don't even know who. No names, just, yes, we need this, yes, we want that. And these aren't kids. These are all people 34. These are the people that live in the city, 34, 62, 67, asking for all this stuff that we are putting together tonight. So, I'm going to support it. I'm not going to back away from it. I'm not afraid. I think the city needs to grow. We've got a lot of new businesses that want to come into this city. I'm all here. I'm going to do everything I can to make it work, and I look forward to working with staff, moving us forward. This is up to you guys.
Yeah, Mayor, may I kind of address? City manager touched on about 23 items that I have here, and it's like he read my book. But everything he said is a factual truth of what's happened. But some uneasiness that I have with the legislature in Tallahassee, as was city manager mentioned, and you're aware of it, is that they have proposed that there be an additional $25,000 homestead exemption for the people at homesteaded. It'll be on the ballot this fall, probably. And that is a significant difference in our revenue stream, because that's $25,000 that people are now paying that they will not be paying. He touched on that. This whole idea in this, everybody spoke about it. We met in, of course, it's been a long time ago, but it was February, March, I guess March. And each one of the items that was on this item was discussed, and each one of us, I included, looked at it and says, "I think we can do it. I think it's a possible thing." Some things has come up a little bit astray with legislation that is very eloquently mentioned. Tallahassee is trying to govern from Tallahassee about what all 410 cities do in the state of Florida. And they are set in policy by preempting us, saying that we cannot do something. We claim it's home rule, and we can do what we want within our city. They use the word preempt and say that, "Well, you're going to be preempted from doing this." And suddenly, we can't have that authority. It's like increasing the homestead exemption. There's six main items that the city manager touched on, and we all agreed, all five of us agreed that, yes, I think we can put that in a long-range plan and do it. Things have changed a certain amount. The projects are all itemized. They're all individually, and they're all good projects. The task is, and challenging to me, is how soon can we do them all? Can we begin them? Can we stagger them out over five, six, eight, 10 years? They total almost $20 million. That is quite a bit of money to pass on to the next city council that they aren't going to have, but they'll have the obligation to pay. And most of us are aware that we shouldn't do like the federal government does, I guess, spend our grandchildren's money. And I guess it's all some brief, it's some concern, it's a serious thing we're going to have to look at. to have to look at, whether or not we can do all of them, or how, the timeframe that we can do them. They're good projects. I'm repeating, but the Cannavale City redevelopment, that's our Cannavale Park, that's what Mike's interested in, because that's someplace for the kids. It's got a multi-
Interested in all of them.
Huh?
I'm interested.
Okay. The, there's a lot of good things in here, it's just, are we really ready to commit to this? And that's kind of where I'm hesitating. There've been some changes since we did, no change in this, our plan's still the same, but the legislature's changed our revenue stream a certain amount. Sherry Down Park has been a desire for us to take it over from the county. It's real close. It's been 79, 10 years we've been working on it. It's to the point now that the county, which owns part of it, and the school board has part of it, have both seen that they're out of money, out of funds, and they would like to let the city of Cape and Cannavale take it over. It needs some help, it needs some work, it's kind of an eyesore, it's been neglected. That needs to be in the city, it is in the city, and it probably needs to be under our care. All these are good projects. You can pick any one of them and say, wow. The city hall building right across here, there's a plan of redoing that and making it for kind of a multi-generation. The term on it is the Cape Cultural Arts Preservation Building. We won't need it after we get to the big city hall. I guess I agreed, and always did, that we need to go forward with this, there's some hesitation because some legislation's been changed. I guess that's my speech in this. It means that we will be obligating the residents, which we can do. It just takes three of us to say, yeah, we want to do it, and suddenly, it's done. I would like it to be all five in succession. So, City Manager, you're right on target. You told everything exactly like we held at the meeting and what we decided on. There've been a lot of changes. It's, the real question comes down to, we want to borrow $20 million to make it happen?
Nine.
Was that 20, or was it 25?
Yeah, just nine. We're only going for, this isn't-
Well-
Actually, we're only going for six, I think.
It depends on here. It says total estimated cost is 18.3, but on the next page, it's been sheared down to where it could be possibly someplace around $6 million by staging it, doing one item at a time, which is certainly logical, and that's what the City Manager is asking here. We had the retreat, it was in March. He wants to approve on the multi-generational facility. That's, some cities call it a youth center, some cities call it a senior center. We have designed it that it would be multi-generational, so it can encompass the seniors in the morning to play cards, bridge, or something. We tire out, we got to take a nap at noon, then the children come in, and they've got the afternoon and the evening after school to use it. So, multi-generational is a wonderful word. We're renovating the old city hall. City Manager's proposing, to begin with, $6 million that we can borrow, and can we pay it back? You're correct.
Turn my six upside down.
Okay, this all isn't going to happen tonight or tomorrow. It's going to be a long, drawn-out plan, but at least we got a plan.
Yes.
It's a plan that people have been asking for. It isn't our dream. It's what the people of this community have been asking for for 10 years. You've been here with us-
Yeah, I have.
I've been here with you for 10 years, 15 years we've been sitting here.
Twenty, thirty.
We've been sitting here, and we are following what the people have asked for, and you have been right here every night, voting for what they're asking for. And, yeah, there's some goings-on in the community, and, yeah, there's some goings-on in Tallahassee, but if you don't keep your shoes moving, you're going to just sit and die. So, I'm going to let Mr. Green have a floor for a minute. He wants to talk, and we're going to listen.
I think the important part for staff, from where we are at this particular moment, is we're in the midst of preparing a budget now. And our typical budget schedule by requirement is we should have that till you know later than July. And additionally required to include a five-year CIP, which you've seen already, the way it's basically going to look with the one-year goals and objectives, and what we're not going to act on, and what we're, you know, moving down the road a little bit. I think there's several good reasons why we want to take a measured approach. One is, we do have a limited staff. We do have limited resources in all respects. We want to make some progress with the fact that, you know, I, over the weekend, yes, I've known and spent time on city business there, too, but what I read in particular caught my attention, because it surprised me a tad, that the prior one-year period, we had 2.2% increase in the inflation rate. And if I remember, overall, the core inflation rate, that the things that we really have to have, kind of as people, was, I think, 1.8%. So, when we're borrowing money at 1.99%, or like we have done in the SRF program for around 1.61% or 1.62%, what you really find is we're financing less than the cost of inflation. And I don't know that you could hope for me to be able to do any better than that. Maybe I could, but by and large, that's very excellent. As far as any comment, there needs to be some clarification. The SRF loan, we are not making payments on the new loan yet, because the projects aren't finished yet. We're still doing the oxidation ditch, and I think there's one other after that. And so, once all that is done, based upon the schedule we have, then we will start paying that debt down, too. And so, it's not like we're borrowing money and not being responsible and entering into a balloon mortgage on a house that, you know, you pay the dues down the road at some point. We're not doing any of those kinds of things. And again, based upon our auditors, and, you know, candidly, they're independent, they have their requirements, we have full disclosure requirements. If you go back and look at the city audit, you'll see something very unique. The City Manager and the Finance Director are assuming all of the responsibility and the obligation to fully disclose in all respects the city's financial statement, and the auditors are relying upon us independently to have done that. And they check up behind us and do their audit each year and issue your report. They meet with members of the city council individually, as well as make a public presentation to the city council. So, everything is disclosed, it's transparent, and frankly, I get rather offended when Tallahassee talks about transparent, and others in our community talk about transparency, when I think we're the only one that's transparent. If I'm not mistaken, the House and Senate for the state of Florida negotiated the budget deal without any public presence. So, at least we're somewhat better than those, and we've chosen them folks or those folks to represent us, so go figure. But I think when all the dust settles, I wouldn't recommend it to you if I didn't believe we could achieve it. And my primary interest here is to meet the wishes of the council, the community, fulfill the dreams, if we can, as a staff, be good stewards of the monies, recognize that construction costs are going up daily, and interest rates are essentially, overall, going up regularly. And so, if we're going to do it, there are windows of opportunity that present themselves. And if we are successful, and I believe ultimately we will with the county and the CRA, then remember, half of the money that will pay for this, 95% of it, will be coming from our citizens to benefit themselves, and it will not be going to the county government. So, what we're really, in effect, doing is getting a 95% grant for community improvements that uniquely benefit the city of Cape Cannavale and its citizens, and we're using another source of revenue, because we were smart enough in 2012 to form a community redevelopment agency, and we were smart enough to time the recession such as it was, that we, that was the absolute low point in housing values and property values. So, from there, we picked the absolute best time to do it, we pulled the trigger and did it, and that was thought out, by the way. And we're benefiting from that, because any growth in the value is now coming, 95% of the county taxes for the redevelopment area are coming to the city in the trust fund. And yes, the city is contributing 95% of our at-the-alarm revenue, growth dollars, if you will, from increased value within the CRA, and that allows us this opportunity. So, we'll know as soon as we can possibly get a fix on where the county is, and if that's the case, remember that the county government, and all I've heard ever since I've been here, is we're a donor city to the rest of Brevard County, i.e. the mainland people. So, what we've done, and what we've presented to you, is a way to capture 95% of that in the CRA, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, because there's a lot of stuff bouncing around in my life base, is that the CRA is about 56% of the entire city limits of the city of Cape Cannavale. So, that's the amount of dollars that are coming back in that would go to the county for its needs. And so, candidly, I think it's a no-brainer. But anyway, that's just me, and I am hired, and an outsider.
But-
Finally.
I know, I'm sorry.
I think I'm exhausted from listening, I don't know.
I'm trying to wear you all down, okay?
The, I just wanted to touch on the $25,000 additional exemption. It looks like it probably will end up going through and getting passed, unfortunately. That's maybe not necessarily be a good thing. But if that does pass, I think what people have to understand is, even if the city, without any of these projects, even if the city kept everything, all expenses, status quo, didn't increase anything, that $25,000 additional exemption is going to be a tax increase, period. Because you're going to have to increase the millage rate to cover the difference of lost revenue, to keep the revenue flow into the city to operate exactly as it is today with the current expenses.
True.
Looking at the 3.46 versus the 3.96, which is only a .5 millage rate increase, a projected, it sounds like this is a proposal, a projected one, it may not even equal that, because we don't know what's going to happen when you finish the budget, and you finish looking at everything, especially with some stuff with the CRA. So, this could possibly be the most that this project, looking at just the multi-generational facility and the old city hall being moved to the Cape Center, because that's all, we're being asked this evening as a council, is to look at those two projects out of the six and approve those two moving forward, which may, and I say may, equal up to a .50 millage rate increase, but possibly not that high. Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely correct. I should have said it that briefly.
Yep. And that's a low cost for such a huge benefit to the city, quite frankly. So, I definitely support this. As far as the other projects, obviously, what you've outlined here is that we're here looking at what we all talked about in that strategic plan, which are those six projects which we all agreed upon, realizing we may have some sort of increase in taxes because of those projects, and also understanding that the value that is going to increase the city is much more than is being asked to pay for those projects. And they may roll out in the next five years, or they may not, quite frankly, but we're asked to approve what we've discussed, and I don't know why we wouldn't do that, approve looking at the changes to the vision statement, which we discussed at the strategic planning also, and also to approve these two projects to move forward. Right? Do I have it right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
In the promenade lesson, 150 words, I don't know that I can count that fast or that high, but anyway, yes.
Every time we do something, or we improve that building, our old city hall, let's say, we improve that building, today it's probably worth $800,000, $1,000,000. But when we're done with it, it's going to be worth three times, four times what it's worth today.
And the money we put in is going to give a huge return. Yep.
So, your small investment into that's going to quadruple the value, so, in a longer, that's why I look, it's, I know, I don't want to do a tax increase, no, nobody does, but when you want to do things, you got to pay the piper. And I think that, I think the tax increase we're looking for is so minute. I mean, we're all sitting here, you know, shuddering about a tax, but don't forget, two years in a row, we went below our-
We rolled back.
We went below the rollback taxes, two years prior, five years prior, as far back as I can remember, it was always rollback, 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 which is great, because it's saving you taxes. But when we go below rollback, I don't think that was ever done before in Brevard County that long, and we did that two years in a row. So, I think it's time for, you know, to restock the coffers a little bit, so that we can move forward again, because we've moved forward tremendously in the last five years, six years, since this guy's been here. I can never sit up here before, just have a meeting, and nothing gets done, we go home. We're getting things done. It's time to keep moving and not quit, so.
At this point, are we looking for a motion for this?
I'm looking for Mr. McMillan to get his two cents worth, or 25 cents, I'm sorry.
I don't know, we'll find out. I just have, hopefully, brief, I'm quoting here, "If this were my money, would I spend it this way?" We have a vision. This is what we decided to do, try and implement the vision. It's going to cost us some money, so I said, let's go for it. I'm done.
Sure. Anybody else want to? Anybody in the audience has anything to say about what's happening here? I mean, we're, this is all tax, what we're talking about. Talking about your city. Talking about our city, and I'm all into this. I don't care, I'm ready to roll, I'm going to do it. I don't want to say anything more, I'm happy. I applaud this gentleman. I've been here all my life, I've been here for every, every one of those guys there, I knew every one of them personally, I knew every city manager. This city has done more in the last seven years than we did, other than put the city together. We're moving, and I'm going to, I'm going to keep moving. So, I'm looking for a motion, if there's nobody else has anything to say.
Do we have to do public comment on this?
We just asked.
Okay. I didn't know, okay, that was officially asked, that's fine. Okay, if that's the case, I move we approve item five, as written.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Proton McMillan and, Betty, was it you, second, Betty? This is Councilmember Walsh. They call the roll table.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Ho?
For.
Mayor Proton McMillan?
For the motion.
Councilmember Randles?
I cannot support it, no.
Councilmember Walsh?
For.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Councilmember Randles, negative. We're going to move on to reports. Is it Bernie awake down there?
No, I am. I couldn't see it.
No.
No report.
You were just laying back there like you were.
The chair was in the way.
Nothing, no.
Those are guns, right?
Thank you, Mr. Green, do you have anything you really want to say tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Betty, go ahead and start down there.
I just have a few things that, I want to thank the city team, the staff here, for our P-fold signs and our circle crossing signs. I know they were removed for a period of time to get some backing, new backing on, and they'll put it back up. I cannot tell you, the residents that have contacted me and said, I think somebody stole those P-fold crossing signs off of North Atlantic, to find out that they were installed, and they were simply taken down by the city to put back up. And I also wanted to mention, and I'm not sure how many people in this community know this, but the, I can't think of the name of the agency, I apologize, it's the Wildlife, the game, the Wildlife Game Commission, I guess it is.
Fish and Wildlife.
Wildlife, Forelife, Fish and Wildlife, yes. For those of you that may not know, they have been in our area, evidently, there's been some, a reported abuse of people zip-tieing the legs of peacocks and leaving them on the ground to die. They found one- our peefowl signs and our surfer crossing signs, I know they were removed for a period of time to get some backing, backing on, and put back up. I cannot tell you, the residents that have contacted me and said, "I think somebody stole those peefowl and crossing signs off of North Atlantic," to find out that they were installing. And they were simply taken down by the city to put back up. And I also wanted to mention, and I'm not sure how many people in this community know this, but the, I can't think of the name of the agency, I apologize, it's the Wildlife, the Game, the Wildlife Game Commission, I guess it is?
Fish and Wildlife.
Forest Life, Fish and Wildlife, yes. For those of you that may not know, they have been in our area, evidently, there's been some, a reported abuse of people zip-tieing the legs of peacocks and leaving them on the ground to die. They found one dead, they found two of them also over, I guess, over at Washington. They have been in the community, and they're looking to see if anybody knows, has any information on who may be doing this, because obviously, I don't know that one person can get this peefowl, zip-tie its legs, and leave it alone. I don't know that anyone can possibly do that. But it is all over different blogs and on Facebook. And if anyone has any information on that, the Florida Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife officer and that agency is looking for any information people may have. Their, the officer that's dealing with this is actually located out of Titusville, and did say that he would be making visits and patrols through the city to see if there's any information that can be found on this. So, I understand something happened over by Harbor Heights or Ocean Gardens, and something else over by Washington Street. I may have the locations incorrect, but that's what was communicated to me. So, if anyone knows anything, go ahead and contact them and let them know.
I'll pass, divide.
I have nothing to say.
I'm trying to make it to the community gardens on Saturdays from 9:00 to 10:00, if anybody's interested in joining me, and talking about whatever, or nothing, or picking weeds. Happy to report, I traded in my gas guzzler for an electric car, so I joined the ranks of the...
My left hand, my left charger?
I have used the charger, and that's wonderful. I have my favorite chargers around Brevard County. National Kids' Parks Day, Saturday, May 20th, 10 to 1, forget where.
Cannavale City Park.
Thank you, that one. I went to the TPO meeting, Space Coast Strangulation Planning Organization meeting, apparently, we get $1 million of federal funds to design a sidewalk from International Drive and Long Point Road, so that's some good news, that's still moving forward, that the intersection is still on the radar for the TPO, which is good news. And they also had an interesting thing about sea level rise, and they're doing a study on how that's going to impact Brevard County and whatnot. And I was surprised to see they had a visual of how much of the county would go underwater with a six-foot sea level rise, and I was surprised how little of Cape Canavale would go under. So, that was some good news right there. And with that, Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Walsh, I've had a pretty busy month. This here was one of our items. We have our gentleman in the back there that headed this team up, and we took first place.
Wait a minute, that's not what you say to me.
The truth comes out.
Our community logged over 557, 500, well, it was 557,000 minutes, if you're rounded up to the highest, with like 5,556, 386, some crazy number, but that's a lot of minutes for this small town. But we had people, I know I had people personally bicycling, people from the gyms, and working out and reporting. And Josh, and Gustavo, they put this thing together, they kind of co-chaired it, and Cape Canavale won first place. I don't care, any city got one. We snookered Melbourne, we snookered West Melbourne, we snookered them all.
Palm Bay with 125,000.
Palm Bay was like fourth, I think. Anyway, that was one of the events. We did a beach safety at Capeview for the kids about the lifesaving beach post stands on the beach, so that they understood, Waterman, old whip and wife, he was there, and he explained that we had that this last week. And student, Archill, went off real well, the library here, was last Friday night. I was a guest speaker for the Chamber of Commerce at Cocoa Beach at the Exploration Tower two weeks ago. We got Palm Bay Chamber marriage breakfast Friday morning, I'll be down there again to that. We get to tell everybody how great the city's doing, and I'll have a big book full for them this time again. I've been invited to go down to Cocoa Beach graduation Friday night, which I'll attend on behalf of Cape Canavale. And I will be at the Brevard Expo tomorrow night at Radisson, that's going to be put on for the public, it's going to be a business show and tell, vendors will be there showing Made in Brevard, so I'm going to attend that. And with that, I'd like to thank city staff for all their hard work on our strategic plan that we put together, and I'm ready to boot. And anybody has anything to say? I bet the guy in green over there, sitting off the plane.
Oh, Mayor, you are making a mistake.
I'm not putting this in, don't worry.
It's all right, he's a keeper.
Alan?
I'm going to leave.
I know what you're going to say, but...
I'm leaving you guys again. That's the bad news. The good news is, you're getting my lovely wife. She'll work hard for you, I know, she's been out here before, she knows the ropes.
We are so, so, so disappointed.
Why what?
Why are you smiling when you're saying that? But I've enjoyed my time here again, it's my third tour.
I guess you're probably telling me it's your last, yeah.
Well, I do not. Bigger, better things, I don't know, maybe bigger things, but not better things, I've always enjoyed my time here in Cape Canavale. You're a wonderful council, I appreciate your support, the sheriff's office, the men and women that wear this uniform and work hard every day for you, and they appreciate the support. So, my phone number's the same, I'm going to be running investigations, special operations, the reserve unit, the school district security, so anything that I can do for you, I'll just a phone call away, and know that the best interest of Cape Canavale always, you know, stuck in my mind, and always, I will always look out for you no matter where I'm at.
Well, certainly, all of the commanders and the folks since I've been here, from the sheriff's department, we are extremely well-served and looked after, and I think, Alan, I don't want to box you in too much, but I believe the sheriff's department budget is only going up, I think, 1% this year, which, he's doing better than I probably will, but anyway, we're very well-served by BCSO, they've been great partners, and same with the fire department, you know, we've got a very good group here, overall, to do the things that you all wish us to do. Yes, again, sometimes we're less than perfect, but the intent is there. Alan, I'm going to miss you, I'm glad Linda's the one that's going to come, because she's, you know, I think I should say this, she obviously has learned an awful lot from you, somehow.
She does a good job. I don't know about her selection in men, but I tend to...
Even David Green makes a mistake once in a while, apparently, but she'll be a great addition, we've worked closely with Linda here before, and Alan's been great, but I think, you know, the difference is, she's a little bit younger, sharper, too. She's got hair.
I'm going to go 50%, okay, there you go.
Yeah, and so, I think we're going to continue to be in very, very good hands, and I hate to see Alan go, but glad to see Linda arrive, and...
She'll do you a good job.
Hopefully, that'll be a promotion for her.
She'll be in place on the third.
Third, okay.
For the next council meeting.
And so, when you come back again, we'll give you another plaque.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Okay, anybody have anything they want to add before we close? We'll adjourn.